Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, January 28th, order at 7:02 PM. It is always 7:02 PM.
It's always 7:02.
A couple of things before we start, we do have a quorum here. Me, Lorraine and Pat are here, and Elisa and Jim are both online, but they are voting members for tonight. So, and then email is also here. So, first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for November 11th, 2024. I know folks got a chance to look at them and sent some comments back. Any other comments to add? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the November 11th, 2024 minutes.
I approve.
Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public to make a comment about anything that's not already on the agenda for this evening.
Susan Ainsley here for the trustee ladies on.
Hi Susan.
Everyone.
Hearing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I move to close the public comment period.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Jim. He beat you to it, sorry. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is planning board review for Ross signage. Ross Dress for Less has signage for the proposed new store located at Kugamall, 2309 North Trip Hammer Mode, wow, Road, excuse me, which has a planned sign area. As per the PS, planned sign area section 5B, planning board approval should be required for sign or signs to exceed 55 square feet prior to the issuance of a sign permit by the village zoning officer. Mike, do you want to provide some other information here?
Yeah, there's, you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, there's quite a little bit here. I got to explain and kind of unpack here. We have Tina with us. Hi Tina, it's the first time I actually met you and didn't email you. What's happened is Ross Dress for Less is going to occupy the Joann Fabric part of the Kugamall. Does not require a special permit. We're talking about apples to apples, no change in parking or anything like that. But what does happen is anytime there's signage for the Kugamall, we have to refer to the planned sign area, which you should have in front of you. And you should also have what Tina has provided for a proposed signage for that, for that new retail store. If you look at the planned sign area, the rules and regs for that, you'll see where the, it says building signs, number two, Roman numeral two, where E comes in, the stores that occupy 14,000 square feet. Gross floor area, they have a primary storefront up to two accessory signs not to exceed 150 square feet. So, what Tina has provided with me, and I will go over that in a few minutes, each sign and how much square foot is being proposed. But if you look down to enforcement, you'll see that Roman numeral five B, planning board approval shall be required for signs that exceed 55 square feet prior to the issuance of the sign permit. And that's why we're here tonight. What you're going to do is we'll review the signs, I'll give you the square footage, you'll see the sign layout. You will figure what you're going to allow. Are you going to only allow what is on this planned sign area? If that's the case, then Tina's going to have to go back and figure out how to get to that 150 square feet. If you're going to allow over that, because let's say the signage looks reasonable, if you're going to look over that, then we're going to have to go and get a variance, a sign variance. So, this is kind of what the planning board needs to determine. So, if you pull out your packet, do you want me to bring this up? Does everyone have a packet?
We've got them.
Okay.
Oh, but Jim and Lisa might not.
Yeah.
No, I have my, I have my packet. It's just, I want to be sure when you're referring to something that I absolutely, I'll ask.
Want to bring it up also?
Yeah, Mike can bring it up, that's fine.
Yeah. Second here. Mike, have you got that screen shared for me?
Yep, just did it.
Okay. Alright, everybody see that, okay?
No.
Not yet.
Not yet.
There we go.
There we go. I think we're, I think we're working on it.
Alright, so, let's go to...
Full screen. Let's go to full screen.
You guys can't see that, okay?
If you can zoom in a little bit, it'd probably be better.
I'll zoom in on one of those, the ones I'm going to look at first. On page S1. This is the storefront sign. And Tina, please jump in if I'm saying this wrong or doing this wrong or explaining it wrong. What I have figured for this sign is your, I took your width, it's basically figuring out the square that you can put around whatever wording is there. And what I've come up with on that is 164 and a half square feet for that, for this section alone.
Just for Ross Dress for Less over the front door?
Yes, and that's already over 150. These two signs over here are both eight foot each.
The little guys?
The two little guys. Okay, so we've got those two calculations. Then we go to the side of the building. This will be, this would be facing Trip Hammer Road. The total square footage here is 126 square feet. Alright, and we go to the next page, and the pylon sign doesn't count because back in the language of the planning, or the signed plan area, they are allowed the use of the, the actual pylon sign to have a spot on that. So, that's, we don't even calculate what belongs in there. That's not added square footage. Okay, we go to...
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yep.
How does the, you know, excluding the pylon sign, of course, how does the square footage in this signage proposal compare with the existing square footage on the Joann Fabric store?
That I don't know, Jim. I don't know. They only have one sign out front.
I know. I went, was anything on the side of the building?
There wasn't.
No, there's not.
There wasn't any.
There was nothing on the sign.
I went over to look, Jim, like it's gone.
Tina, Tina, do you happen to know what that is? No. Tina, you there?
Sorry about that. I don't know offhand, but I'm trying to find out right now.
Okay, I'll continue with what I'm doing. Jim, put that on hold if you would, please.
Well, no, could I just clarify or follow up on the last question? You know, we all know there's no sign on the current sign on the side of the Joann building. I was, would also be curious, and I guess, you know, something to look at, comparing the square footage of the sign in the front of the building above the entrance to the Joann sign. So, that might be a second inquiry.
Joann Fabrics typically have, their signs are pretty big on the front facade.
Yeah, it is big.
Yeah. And I don't know about that one. I don't know if that one had, oh, look, here's a picture of it right here. How do I share this to show you guys?
My finger will let you.
Is there's, is there some dimensions on that?
But probably not with my chair.
There's no dimensions, but visually you could see the size, and it's probably right up there with the front facade of the Ross sign. The Joann is, is pretty big. I mean, I could, I could probably have somebody scale it and figure it out.
How are you going to proceed with this?
I don't think that's really necessary yet. I'd like to hear the whole presentation first before we get into that, but I don't think it is out of line with that, Joann. I agree with you, but I think I have some other issues. So, I'd like to keep going if we could.
Then I'll continue with, there is under canopy sign, you'll see at the bottom of your sheet says UCH. That sign is another 7.35 feet.
I don't see the picture.
Where is that one, Mike? UCH.
Like, where is that one? Where does it go?
That's, that's the sign, that's the sign that literally, so you know, if you're walking through a strip mall, the one that you see right in the doorway? So, if you look to the left, you're like, where is Ross? And you look and it's C, it's a, it'll be right.
It's C on the hanger.
It'll be right here.
Oh, so there was that one? Is there one on each side?
No, there's just one of those.
Just double sided, double sided.
Can you scroll down to S2, Mike, the next page now? So, that's it hanging right off.
That's number S1. Okay, that's that one. Okay, alright.
And that's also eight square feet?
That is seven.
No, it's 7.2.
I calculated it as 7.35, so I'm coming to that group.
What's the, back up, what's the thing that's labeled either a B or an eight?
That's it. It's, it's labeled eight. C and, no, it's not labeled B, it's labeled C.
Well, there's S, one that's labeled S1, and then there's...
On the S2, it's labeled as S1.
And then there's, to the southwest of that, there's eight, eight, I guess.
That's just the color band.
Yeah, just the blue color.
If I could just, yeah, if I could, so, S1, the S1 sign is the main facade sign. Ross, that's, that's the Ross Dress for Less branding. That's their sign, that's, you know, that's all over the country, even including Puerto Rico. That's, that's their signage. The two wall plaques that are eight square feet each, that you see on either side of those, again, that's also standard branding for Ross Dress for Less, as is the under canopy. Well, here it's not an under canopy, here it's more of a projecting sign off the building. Where it's capable of doing it, it literally goes under that, right above the front doors, underneath the canopy there, if there is a canopy. That's typically where that sign goes. In this case, it's not able to go under there. They don't have that canopy type overhang, so they're proposing it goes on the side, right there to the right.
Okay, everybody good right now?
Yep.
Okay, those are all of the signs that we need to be concerned about. The rest of these signs that are coming soon and whatnot, that is also handled by our regular sign law, and I'll speak to Tina about what has to be done with that. But that's not anything the planning board needs to decide on. What is, if I take all of the signs that we just went through, and add them together, I come up with 313.85 square feet.
So, before we get into that, so you're saying that all of the other things that were discussed in the packet, the window stuff, those are the temporary signs that will be addressed by our code, right?
Correct.
Including the window signs that probably take up more than 30% of the area?
Yes, I'll be, I'll take care of that via, you know, as it's considered a temporary signs, because in your, in the Kugamall sign development area, they also, it also talks about temporary signs on Roman number 4D. It says, upon opening of a new business, said sign shall be, shall conform with all applicable village sign laws. And then, so I'll end up dealing with that, and I'll end up talking, I'll talk to Tina about that. Which you're, which you're just...
Also, just so you know, they're not necessarily proposing all those signs. That's literally their standard packet that they put together, and then whatever we can use, they'll, you know what I mean, whatever they're allowed to do, they'll do. But that's not necessarily they want all of those signs.
Okay, but I'll end up reviewing that with you, Tina, what they can have with the temporary signs. So, what the planning board, what you have now is Tina's proposing 313.8 square feet, and the planned sign area allows two accessory, or one primary and two accessory signs not to exceed 150 square feet. So, what happens here is the planning board has got to figure what is reasonable. If they want to go with the 313.85, that's fine, you can go with it, but it'll still end up having to go to the board of zoning appeals for a variance. Anything over that 150 square feet will have to go for a variance. So, it's up to the planning board to figure what would be reasonable in this case.
Do you want to share that?
Oh, yeah, let me, let me share this really quick, Mike.
Yep, I'll get up here.
I'll kick you off, don't worry.
Yeah, I know you will.
So, that's the current, well, current, it's not actually there on the building anymore, but that's what it looked like.
And, and I, and I would have to agree with Tina that it's similar to what's they're proposing.
There was nothing on the side of the building, and there wasn't anything between there and E's.
Right.
So, that, that was pretty much their signage there. We've got questions for Tina.
And just that reminder that that front sign I calculated is 164 and a half square feet.
So, that, that still requires then a variance, is what you're saying?
It would require 14 foot variance, yeah. 14 square foot variance.
Okay. May I speak?
Yes.
Okay. I have no problem at all whatsoever with the storefront, but I do have a lot of problem with some of the other signage, specifically the side signage. Just because they're on a corner, Target's on the corner. I don't like setting a precedent for that. I don't think it's necessary in a village our size. I believe the pylon covers that, and I believe that when we have a score that somebody wants to come to, what with today's search ability and whatnot, that it's totally unnecessary, and it just, I find it a visual assault, frankly. I just think there's just overkill here with most of the other signs involved, frankly. That one I'm particularly disturbed by, and I don't see the need for the two little Ross on the front. I know we do get concerns from other people saying, well, this is our corporate image and all of that, but you know what? It just, it's already in violation, and I just don't, I don't see how it adds to the situation. I think we have in the past, I recall when we did honestly Applebee's, we even went over the fact that their, their awnings had logo. And I think in order to be fair to the other merchants in our town, we need to not be lowering our standards. But I agree that the front is totally appropriate.
Yeah.
Now, if I can just sum up what Lisa had said, if you leave just that front storefront, the one sign that's on the facade over top of the front doors, and you take away the side large sign, and you take away the two small Ross signs, but you leave the one that's overhanging, the canopy sign, so to speak, you're at 171.85.
How do the other board members feel about the sign?
I totally agree with Lisa. When I looked at these plans and saw this signage, I thought it was total overkill. Also, isn't there, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there, isn't there a mural on the end of the building?
I think there is now.
Rover.
Yeah.
It's towards the, like, towards the, yeah, I'll show you.
It's like halfway. Still there, right? And I think that having a sign on the end of that building would be a real eyesore, to be perfectly honest. And also those smaller signs, it's just not necessary. And the other smaller sign hanging out, I think the signage on the front is plenty. You can see it from everywhere. And it's the only store like that we would have up here, besides Target, so.
So, so wait, oh, so there's a mural on the side of that building where they were proposing that other sign?
Yeah, it's like right around here. I don't know if you can see my, yeah, right around here somewhere.
Ah, okay. They might not know that.
Yeah.
It's more, Tina, for me, it's more a matter of setting a precedent for other corner stores. You know, we've just not allowed it, and I, I really don't think it's necessary under these circumstances, but certainly I'm one vote here, so, but.
Well, can I chime in?
Yep.
Actually, two votes, because I am in complete agreement with, with what Lisa has said, and including Lorraine's additional point. I think the sign over where Joann is is perfectly adequate. The sign on the side of the building is going too far. The pylon sign lets people know, hey, yeah, this is the right shopping mall if you want to go to Ross, but they're right in the front, so people are going to see it anyway. And the other signs in the windows and the sort of little hanging sign, again, I don't think they're necessary.
Pat?
I'm in complete agreement. I think the primary sign is all they need.
Mila?
Absolutely same.
Yeah. I feel the same way too, so, I mean, it kind of sounds like...
So, we're also omitting the low hanging sign?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and that's what I was, so, right, the, nothing on the side of the building, the two small signs that are, you know, on the, on the building, on the left and right, and also the one that kind of juts out. There's just nothing like, nothing else like that in this plaza here, anyway, on any of the...
Totally out of character.
Yeah.
I think if the, if this were not the first building you go by as you come into the mall, I would, I would consider that hanger, as you said, Tina, when somebody's walking down the strip, they would see, oh, wait, there's Ross down there, let's, but it's the first one, they're not going to miss it. You're, you're number one in line, and I think, as I said, you know, it's kind of different now that people just say, oh, I want to go to Ross, or I know there's a Ross somewhere. They, they're going to Google it, and they're going to find you.
Yeah.
And I think the big sign is...
That's exactly what those, that, and like I said, so typically, if Ross has so kind of like the same as Ace and the sign of same as Aldi, that sign would be a hanging sign, like, right over the door under that little overhang. That's typically what, what they do. In this case, though, they don't have that, so I guess that's why they were proposing the, the actual projecting sign from the, from the building.
And as a practical matter, if you've parked your car, you've seen the big sign that says Ross, the Ross sign that's way up there, you don't really need that hanging sign by the door because you know where you're going.
Right. Now, and, and like she said, it's because they're the first store, when you come in, it's, it's different, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't have that recessed walkway, so it's, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would, I would support, what, so what's the main sign there, Mike? It's 160, almost 162 and a half square feet?
164 and a half.
164 and a half. I would be, you know, and that fits, if you take a look at that, it's roughly, if you look at the lines here, it's pretty comparable to what was there for Joann, and what the other, it looks like, at least, you know, Mike would have to do measurements if we really wanted to. But that looks pretty in character, size wise and everything with the rest of the buildings that are in, in that mall on the way down. So, I would support approving that piece of it, but not the other ones. Just my opinion.
Subject to a variance?
Yeah, subject, obviously subject to the variance, we'd have to go to...
And honestly, if they wanted to make it go smoother, just keep it 150, do as of right, and then you don't have to come back again.
Yeah, right, yeah, if you can shrink it down a little bit.
A very little bit.
A very little bit, yeah.
It's, it's not going to be much smaller at all.
Yeah, so that's an option too, Tina, if, you know, if, if, you know, if we say, yeah, we're good with, you know, the approving the 160 for whatever it is, which is, you know, 14 feet over, if you can shrink that down 14 feet, then it, you know, it meets the, it meets the requirements for the, for the planned sign area, and you don't need to go to the BZI.
Right.
Um, is this just a...
Yeah, you don't need a res, you don't, I don't think you need a resolution or anything like that, so.
You're going to need the variance, so I guess it just depends what they want, or if they want to submit a revised sign plan.
So, I don't know what your thoughts are, Tina?
Well, it's definitely not my decision. I have to go back to them and talk to them about it, and let's see what they, what they want to do.
Okay.
What I'll do, Tina, is I'll write this up for you, an email in the next couple of days, and I'll also send over what the requirements are for temporary signs, since you have all of this.
Okay.
So, if you gotta, if you gotta submit it, that'd be, you have everything you need.
Yeah, I know they typically like to do, at, once this, you know, as the store is kind of under construction, you know, they'll like to put like a coming, coming soon, something, they'll, you know, maybe, if they, they like to put the tenant paddle in when they're, you know, doing the build out, and sometimes they like to put like a little corner, like a little coming soon on the tenant paddle, stuff like that. It's, it's, yeah. That, that package, I don't know why they show all of those signs. Those are just the different variations of the signs that they like to use, but they don't use them all. So, I've told them before, I don't know why you guys put them all in there. But, yeah, I'll talk to them tomorrow, and I'll keep a lookout, Mike, for your email, and I'll keep you posted.
Okay. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you everyone for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you, Tina.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to open up the public hearing for lot line change number 2025-4835. Bor Warner Ethic LLC is proposing to reconfigure lot lines of parcels solely owned by their company. The lots involved are located on the north side of Bomax Drive and 78 Warren Road. The proposed plant changes can be viewed at the Village of Lansing office. Mike?
Yep, I'll come up here.
Entertain a motion.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to close, sorry, open the public hearing. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor? Okay, take it away, Mike. Hey, Mike. I scrolled down, I don't know if you were coming on.
First of all, I do have all the mailings. David Huckle sent all those out to all the contingent parcels. This is somewhat odd because of the definition, first of all, you have to determine if it's a minor or a major subdivision. The definition is somewhat odd, and we're somewhat in a transition period of, first of all, you know, definition of a subdivision is by creating another lot, they're doing here. But at this point in the village law, we have no other way of handling just a, you know, a lot line change. We will in another few weeks, if you, David, if you waited another month, we could have a lot more. But, so be it, this is how we have to handle it. So, the planning board needs to, first of all, declare whether this is a minor or a major subdivision. By definition, I mean, you can figure it out that it's a major or minor subdivision. And then if David's got anything else to add, or anyone else has anything to add as far as what's happening with these lots, it's, it's slightly, slightly confusing. That's why you have a section in the upper right hand corner that actually tells you what the lots are going to look like. There was, Natalie had brought up a good point that because of the municipal line between the village and the town, you are technically, you have landlocked parcels there. So, all kind of by definitions, what Natalie had proposed is that we add something into the resolution if this were to be approved, that states something similar to the proposed parcels E and B are landlocked due in part to municipal boundary. As a condition of the subdivision, any future events of parcel E and parcel B must include a tax map parcel with frontage on a public highway or street, or deed it right away, access to a public highway or street. Further, the applicant will not convey their adjacent parcels in such a way that was landlocked parcel E and parcel B. And if you have questions about that, Natalie can explain why we're putting that in there. Makes sense.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, I guess with that, right, like, like Mike mentioned, just in case you don't remember, this is one of the things that we talked about, and it was mostly Natalie and Mike, you know, coming up with a change to village code, or through, I guess, is it a local law or is it just code?
It's going to be a local law.
It would be a local law, that in the future, if it was a month down the road, the Board of Trustees are looking at the proposed language that we developed and sent to them on, I think, I'll do. They'll open up a public hearing and vote on it at some point, and in the future, this won't even come to the planning board, so.
Well, in the future, this one would probably still come to a plan, but don't feel so bad, Dave.
A normal lot line change would not, but this is... A normal lot line change would not, but this is.
In the proposed lot line, you can't create or maintain landlocked parcels. So this would still come to us, most likely for us to put a similar condition in that while they're technically probably indeed the same parcel because it crosses the municipal boundary, it creates a landlocked tax map parcel. In theory, you could sell off E, creating an island of a landlocked parcel. So that's why we want to avoid things like that. And I understand there may be reasons why you don't want to consolidate A, B, and C together because they may not necessarily track for your use, but that's why we have the condition there. We just don't want E and B to be left alone out there in the middle of the field.
And this is a type two action, so you need all EAF and GML two thirty-nine.
Uh, anything you want to add, or?
No, I'm basically here to represent them. I'm not with Borg Warner, but I'm their agent. They would have been here, but there was an emergency. I'm with Cushman and Wayfield, Perman Brokerage, the market man, and I handle their real estate services. Uh, but this was basically done largely for two reasons, to clean out lot line boundaries. There's vacant land that is your well where is under contract, Park Grove. So we wanted to clean up those boundaries, but at the same time, I suggested there were other boundary lines cutting off parking lots and, and some other crazy stuff. So we had TG Miller take care of that at the same time. Uh, there's a smaller manufacturing plant, it's not so small, it's two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. The larger one remains as it is in the town. Uh, there's also a tech center and group offices that we've also tried to segregate that parcel. So we've tried to basically clean up the lot lines.
Um, Brent?
Yeah, um, just wanted to point out a detail that probably has no bearing on the current thought process of subdividing, but we can anticipate maybe what might be coming along in the future, and that's that lots or parcel C cuts through an existing stormwater retention basin or the factory. And so if that becomes tran, if that property gets sold, then there would need to be some kind of a, a stormwater management agreement that would help, uh, you know, a detail how either who's going to take care of that, or, you know, it seems like it's something that Borg Warner has an obligation to, and seems like they would need to retain their obligation or come up with some kind of other solution, which I, you know, certainly not, I don't think it's necessary to dictate all that right now, but maybe if it's just, I don't know, uh, is it, is it David who's there in the meeting tonight? Yeah, hi, David. You know, somehow just makes, you know, so that we know that they're, I don't know if anybody thought of it. If they have, maybe they're already got some kind of strategy, but if they hadn't thought of it, it's something that I want to think about. If, if what we know, what we think might be going on continues to, you know, move that direction.
Yeah, and I think that would be right, that would be, you know, if something were to happen with that property in the future, right? Right now, we're not here to discuss that. We're here to discuss, you know, the owners want to subdivide the property, they can do that. Great. If something were to happen on that property and that was impacted, right, that would generally be a general condition or something. We would definitely discuss that. I mean, it would potentially be a, a condition on any, any special permit or anything that we, before we grant it.
And, and Mike, I discussed it. I discussed it with Borg. We've had extensive discussions with Park Grove. So everybody's on the same page and, and working towards the same goal that I think he as a village would have with respect to that potential program.
So is Brent, is that the one that kind of goes through all three of those parcels on the, on the west side? The retention pond?
I only have a little portion of it in front of me right now. I don't have a full size map, so.
It looks like that to me, like it continues along.
It goes through E, B, and C, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, okay, I just wanted to be sure I knew what you, we were, I was, knew what we were talking about. Okay, great. Good to keep in mind.
I highlighted mine in blue if that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
There you go. That's the one. Yeah, okay, good.
I think Mike, Mike, Mike might be bringing it up so people can look just so you're sure, but, yeah. Other comments from folks while Mike's bringing that up?
There it is. Okay.
So E is, E is above that, but yeah, you can see the part of it in B, in B and C there.
Yeah, this is your stormwater pond area, and this is the section we're talking about.
Right. Okay.
I mean, this, this might not be completely accurate, but this is where the pond is in this area.
So thanks, Mike, for bringing that up. If folks don't have questions, I know for special permits and things, we usually do keep the public hearing open for two. For, you know, subdivisions and things like that, we have done them in one before, so if folks are comfortable closing it out tonight, more than willing to. If folks are not comfortable and want to collect more information, keep it open for another meeting we can. I'm, I'm good. Lisa, Jim, Brian's good.
I'm fine. I'm fine with closing it.
Make reference one way or the other.
Okay. Um, then in that case, I would entertain a motion to close the public permit period. Public hearing, I keep saying public comment period. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor? Uh, end of then, so we, I just have this here, right, so we did the proof of mailings, there's no seeker, we found it a type two action for seeker purposes, there's no EAF, there's no general conditions or seeker resolution or anything. So I think it's just the, the resolution that folks have in front of them, so I will read it off and, yeah. Uh, this is Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for final plat approval of minor subdivision number twenty twenty-five dash forty-eight thirty-five, adopted on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Whereas this matter involves final plat approval, consideration of the following proposed action, Borg Warner LLC is proposing to reconfigure lot lines of parcels solely owned by their company. The lots involved are located on the north side of Boemac Drive and include seven eighty Warren Road and B. On January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, the Village of Lansing Planning Board, in accordance with subsection D of section one twenty-five dash five of the Village of Lansing Code, one reviewed, the sketch plan submitted with respect to this proposed action, and two classified the proposed subdivision as a minor subdivision. And C, the planning board finds this to be a type two action for seeker purposes. And D, on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, the Village of Lansing Planning Board held a public hearing regarding this proposed action and thereafter thoroughly reviewed and analyzed one, the proposed final subdivision plat and accompanying materials and information presented by and on behalf of the applicant in support of this proposed action, including information, materials related to environmental issues, if any, which the board deemed necessary or appropriate for its review. All other information and materials rightfully before the board, and all issues raised during the public hearing and/or otherwise raised in the course of the board's deliberations. And I'll therefore be resolved as follows. Uh, based upon all of its foregoing review and action, it is hereby determined by the Village of Lansing Planning Board that approval of the proposed action for the proposed Borg Warner minor subdivision is directed and I to subject to the conditions and requirements set forth below. Um, we do have A, which is the one that we talked about. The proposed parcels E and B are landlocked due in part to a municipal boundary. As a condition of the subdivision, the future advance of parcel E and parcel B must include the tax map parcel with frontage on a public highway or street, or deeded right of way access to a public highway or street. Further, the applicant shall not convey their adjacent parcels in such a way that would landlock parcel E or B. Um, and then two, the village of, the chairperson of the Village of Lansing Planning Board is hereby authorized and directed to sign final plat for the approved minor subdivision in accordance with subsection G of section one twenty-five dash six and subsection A of one twenty-five dash fifteen of the Village of Lansing Code. I will entertain a motion to grant the minor subdivision.
Uh, quick question. Uh, where, where does the portion where we talk about the stormwater retention pond?
So that's not part of the subdivision? That would be something that if somebody came in to, um, do something on that property. It would require a. That's when that would happen, yeah. It could sit there forever.
Great.
Okay. Uh, motion to grant by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor? Very much. You're all set. Um, do you have stuff for me to sign, Mike, right? We can do that after the meeting?
I can connect up.
Okay, yeah, I'll sign the stuff and tell it to you for any order of finding. You want to sign these now or do you want to wait?
I can sign them later.
Okay, uh, continuing on. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for special permit number twenty twenty-five dash fifty-eight thirty-six. The Southern Cayuga Lake Inter Municipal Water Commission is planning to upgrade the electrical control equipment at the raw water pumping station located at Bolton Point Road, tax parcel number forty-two point one dash one dash thirty-seven point one. I entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa. Second by Lorraine. All in favor? Okay, uh, Mike?
Yeah, let me get my bearings here a second. Okay, what I've done with this is I have sent out a GML two thirty-nine to the county. Uh, that was sent out last week. That normally takes thirty days. But I do figure that we'll probably end up doing two meetings for this, uh, this proposal. I'm going to let whoever's here to represent Bolton Point to discuss what is going to be, uh, what they're proposing to do with this twenty by twenty pole barn. And I know that, well, we welcome back Brent Cross. We haven't seen him since, I think, twenty twenty-two, maybe. Seems like that, but it's good to have him back. This is his expertise, and I know he has a few questions to ask. So I'll let you guys take it away, whether Greg wants to or whoever else wants to take this away.
Thank you. I'll start and Greta may correct me if I'm wrong. The project undertaking is the raw water pump station down at the lake pumps raw water from the lake up to the water treatment plant, where it's treated and distributed to the member communities of the commission. The electrical switchgear in the raw water pump station approaching fifty years old needs to be replaced. However, everyone here likes, likes their water. We all like our, we all like our potable water. So we can't turn the water off to rip out the old switchgear and put in new switchgear. So usually in these situations of critical infrastructure, uh, we will construct the new and then cut over the old gear to the new to minimize the disruptions to the member communities. That's a matter of public health, it's a matter of pub, public safety. The, uh, the addition here is Bolton Point investing in their infrastructure to ensure the continued availability of, of potable water to its member communities. That only requires an addition to the building. Uh, we also want the new switchgear out of the damp, call it the process area of the pump station. Make sure the, just to ensure the, the long, the long life, so we don't have to do this again anytime soon. So that's the purpose of the project. It requires a building addition, it requires some fill to create a level area that we can construct the building addition. And that's a brief for the project description.
Great. Thanks, Greg. Um, Brent?
Okay, so, um, I did get a chance to speak to Greta very late this afternoon, and we kind of went over some of my general concerns, so I won't take up a lot of time with you tonight. But just kind of to touch on some things. I hadn't had a chance, or hadn't had a conversation with Natalie, but I, I found it to be unusual that Bolton Point had already gone through and declared lead agency and kind of, sort of preempting the, the planning board's opportunity to do that. I guess maybe it, it sounds like maybe there's a nuance between what they, their action might have been a lead agency for the, the decision to uh, have a, uh, an, an action by an intermunicipal government agency that they had to take. But I, I think in having spoken to Greta today, that they're not looking to oppose for us to do our own, for our own purposes for the special permit approval. So I think that, uh, it, it appeared as though there was some kind of, uh, maybe just a, uh, lack of communication there. So, um, that's kind of a, not an engineering question, but I thought I, I did have that conversation. So moving on to technical aspects of it. Mike and I, Mike, Scott and I talked, and I don't think that there's ever been a flood, a project in a flood plain area in the village. In fact, there's new FEMA maps that, uh, have just come out, which kind of reorganizes or re-designates flood areas, and the village will eventually be putting together a new local law or resolution to address that. But in the meantime, it's, um, doing my best to try to, uh, put two and two together here. There's, there's two things that are going on with this project that seem to be noteworthy for the village. And that, the first one is, is that there's, um, some stream bank stabilization going on within the, this is where it gets a little bit hard to, to know exactly what's the prevailing, who's the prevailing, uh, agency. But, uh, depending on whether you're talking about the village regulation, the old village regulations or the, uh, the Army Corps regulations, but there's two different, uh, lines that we're dealing with. One is the, uh, the flood line, the, um, forgotten even the terminology, but there's one line that's the flood line, and then there's the other, which is called the high, the, the daily high water mark. And so it's the amount of fill that's being put into the floodable area, the floodable zone is different than the amount of fill that's being put into the, um, the high water mark. And so it was explained to me by Greta that they have already been to Army Corps of Engineers and have been issued a permit, uh, which covers them for the, the nationwide permit, which they don't actually need to seek a permit for. It's, if they meet the regulations, they're covered, is the, uh, nationwide permit number thirteen, which addresses, um, the stream, the, the slope stabilization. And in the definition that's provided by Army Corps of Engineers, they're allowed to add up to one cubic foot of soil to each. to add up to one cubic foot of soil to each lineal foot of shoreline in the process of stabilizing the, the bank. That is within the daily high water mark as opposed to the amount of soil that's being added, proposed to be added within the floodable area, the, you know, the high, the, for lack of a better word, I think it's, it's the old fashioned term for a hundred year flood. So it's a little bit confusing. I think they maybe, they might have it under control. There, I believe Greta, Greta was going to send us a copy of an, a permit that they have been issued by the Army Corps of Engineers and I'd like to take a look at that. I suspect that they've done, you know, they've done a thorough job, but it's just so unusual for us and I'm, I'm kind of a little bit, little cautious, I guess is the right word on, you know, what we're dealing with here. So I think the, there was a discussion a few moments ago about whether it's likely to keep this, you know, hearing open for another month. And I think that would be wise for us to be able to just, you know, go over this with a fine tooth comb, just to make sure that everything that they're telling us is what, what I can confirm to represent to the village.
Yeah, so we definitely will keep this open for a second meeting, for sure.
Yeah. On a more normal topic, there, I have taken a look at the site for stormwater management and the amount of soil disturbance is a fairly small amount that doesn't come close to triggering any kind of full SWIP. So we won't be looking for that. And, and the impervious area is even, you know, very small. So it, it's very unlikely that there'll be any real stormwater issues as a result of this project, but that I think for consistency with all of our past decisions, we've always asked for applicants, even though they're not required to do so for compliance with full DEC stormwater regulations, we always ask them to take a look at the green wa, green practices that are in the design manual and try to incorporate two out of the, and I don't know if that's, I think the inventory has changed, but two out of the entire list, incorporate something into the plan that shows that they've basically made a good faith effort to do stormwater management. And I mentioned that to Greta and I, I must, I think that's probably going to be, not going to be a problem for them, but she really didn't have a chance to, to take a look at that before the meeting tonight.
Yeah, thanks Brent. Just to jump in quick, we're going to have to circle back with Bolton Point on any design changes like that. You know, given the very minimal amount of disturbance and the very, very minimal, the 400 square feet of new impervious on site, we're going to have to make sure that, you know, take a look at the list and see what, if anything, we can do, but we'll get back to you after we circle back on that.
Mike?
I, I just wanted to add a couple of things for what, what Brent had to say is it'd be one of the reasonings for coming to the board for the special permit because this is located in your, in your combination or your, yeah, combination combining district in the unique natural area. And in general, the planning board will usually require a botanist to go through and check for fauna and flora. But I just want to let the board know that the, there was a short EAF provided and, and that with that, there's a part three that summarizes a lot of the supporting information. A lot of this is taken care of and summarized in number nine, where it describes the type of flora and fauna that would be located within that area. So I kind of wanted to put that out because that is normally what the planning board will end up doing for the unique natural area. And I believe that's all I had to say.
Lisa?
So one of, well, there are a couple of things actually. Yeah, when I saw that in, and the secret mentioned, well, in the very small print and then that was addressed about the animals, it was sort of like, when was any of this stuff seen or last? I don't know. But the one thing that, not being any close to being an engineer, but given that we're seeing extraordinary floods and things, is this even high enough now to take us into the future is what I'm wondering. Does, does, can you get like get controlled levels? I mean, do they really?
Yes. Cayuga Lake, yeah, Cayuga Lake and Seneca Lake, levels are, are controlled. The two lakes are operated on an operating diagram and they're controlled by the, by the canal corp.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I thought, that was my first thing is, okay, is this really going to be high enough? Because everybody's thinking, oh, you know, this is great, but guess what? We're having hundred year floods now every two years or something. And so that was one of my thoughts. And the other was, was about asking about, so this number nine was addressed by, when was it that it was looked at the, the floor and the fauna?
April 2022.
Yeah, okay. And that was when it said that there are no recent reports of the species near the project area. Okay. But all right, so that as long as the lake is, is controlled, I thought it was, but I wanted to be sure about that.
Yeah, Mike Baker, I'll also add that when you get the report back from the county, they generally will also suggest requiring those two green practices that Brent had also mentioned. It's been pretty common that, that, but they put that in on a project like this.
Yeah.
Didn't we add it to our special permit conditions? I thought we did. We decided to add that as a condition for all ongoing special permits, no?
Yeah, we were just talking about that. I don't think we've done a, if, if we're going to, well, that would be a different discussion if we're actually going to do all of these, or I know we discussed that, but...
Yeah, we discussed something that we used to check off.
Yeah, it's, it's on the list of things that we make sure we don't forget about. Yep.
Okay.
Other comments from planning board members or questions?
Yeah. Okay. You just had listed that the electric room will be air conditioned to control humidity. How is that being done?
It'll be a, it'll be a split system just to, with a condenser outside.
And then the other question I have is, I was looking at the detail for, for your steak planting.
Oh yes, that was interesting.
Yeah, so I, you know, I, I'd love that you guys are doing this and I would also caution that steaks three foot on center is going to be really sparse and sometimes steak plantings don't always take. They have a higher failure rate sometimes, so it might be, I don't know, advisable to do something a little bit more dense to, to account for, you know, the failure rate there and just to make sure that you get more root growth quicker.
Yeah, we can take a look at that density of the same things. The three foot on center is the typical offset that we'll use, but.
Which totally makes sense for, you know, B and B or a container, but the failure rate on these is a little bit higher, so it might be worth just looking into a denser planting or a secondary planting after a certain period. Cause I was looking, your timetable is actually pretty, pretty condensed. I saw that you have that you'll be pulling the coffer dams once, once the plantings are established and the vegetation is stabilized. Is that, does that mean you're looking to get some root growth in there before you remove the coffer dam?
I don't know, let me just pull that up. I don't think that's the intent. Typically we'll pull, have the contractor pull the coffer dams after site work is complete. But I don't see root growth happening for probably another growing season.
Okay.
Yeah, usually, usually the coffer dam would be just to do the work that would otherwise be in the wet, just to de-water the, and then.
Mike? Since it's a special permit and we have to abide by the tree law, are we set on density there and is that something we need to look at?
You're muted.
No, we're good.
Now we're obviously going to leave it open, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions of anybody? Okay, so like I said, yeah, for these, we do typically keep them open for two meetings, so we can end back up at the, at the next meeting.
Mike, did you want to go over part one of the EAF in case there's any changes or anything that can be made for the next meeting?
Yeah, we can do that. I think everybody has a copy in front of them, right? Okay. So does the proposed, and so some of this is, is kind of labeled and, and the other is, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? No. If no, continue to question two. Does the proposed action require permit approval of funding from any other government agency? If yes, list them. So there's the Tompkins County Health Department for Design Approval, New York State DEC Section 401 and Article 15 permits, the Army Corps of Engineers, Section 10 and 404 permits, Village of Lansing, local flood plain development permit, NiSOG state owned land underwater permit and the New York State Canal Corps Occupancy and Work Permit. So those are the other departmental agencies. Total acreage of the site of proposed action, point seven seven acres. Total acreage to be physically disturbed, about point two acres. Total acreage for everything, point seven seven. Check all land uses that occur on or adjoining or near the proposed action. They checked forest, rural, aquatic and other for other public water supply. Does the proposed action, a permitted use under the zoning regulations? Yes. Consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Yes. Is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes. Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it join a state listed critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No. Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? No. Are any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? No. Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? No. If no, describe the method the proposed project will not generate wastewater. Does the proposed site contain or is substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site or district which is listed on the National or State Register of Historic Places or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places? No. Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive or archaeological sites under New York State Historic Preservation Office, Archaeological Site Inventory? No. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by the federal, state or local agency? Yes. Will the proposed action physically alter or encroach into, into any existing wetland or water body? Yes. Wetland delineation was completed in April 2022. No freshwater wetlands were identified within the project site. One stream and two stormwater drainage channels were observed outside of the proposed limits of disturbance. Site elevation and shoreline reventment will involve fill below the ordinary high water elevation, mean high water level of Cayuga Lake. That's all listed there. Apply the typical habitats. Type habitat, type habitat. Types that occur on or are likely to be found on the project site. Check all that apply shoreline and forest. Does the site of proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by state or federal government is threatened or endangered? Yes. Northern log-eared bat, monarch butterfly, how lake sturgeon, drummond's rock bass, yellow giant, hiss up. I think that's everything. Is the project site located in the 100 year flood plain? Yes. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? Yes. Will stormwater discharge flow to adjacent properties? Yes. Will stormwater discharge be directed to established conveyance systems, runoff in storm drains? No. New building addition will result in a small increase in impervious surface. Stormwater will be directed to Cayuga Lake. Proper erosion and sediment control measures will be implemented during construction to prevent trepided runoff from entering the lake. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? No. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been a location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No. Has the site of the proposed action or, or an adjoining property been a subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazardous waste? No. Any comments about any of that? Did everybody give checks to read over the supporting information so that I don't have to read over it all for everybody?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I mean, I can if you all want me to. Okay, there you go. So I guess that's good then, so. Anything else? Mike or Brent or Natalie? Okay, we will see you at the next meeting then. You can get in touch with Mike and Brent. That's where I just a couple, a couple of little things that were brought up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is other business. Planning board will host a discussion with David Fernandez from a Cayuga Landscape about the village tree law. Thanks for coming back.
Thank you.
The fourth time.
Yeah, you know, well, we appreciate it four times.
So let's see, here with Athena comes on, who is a work culturalist and will be, what's the best format? Should I stick you?
Whatever your company.
So we met with Lisa and Lorraine about a month ago to discuss just being a resource for tree planting, understanding some of the confusing things, some of the revolution in tree planting successfully over the last 20, 25 years. Since we first were planting here with Carol Cayman and some of the early board members around the village roads. Many of the trees actually that were planted along Trippham Road years ago were done. And maybe 1985, there was a program to also did sponsor tree planting throughout the streets of the Village of Lansing by, I think they offered $50 a tree as a little bonus the village did in that era. And so there was a wide, I would say a broad tree planting program that lasted for a few years. And subsequently, we've had done design build work with John Courtney and your PPW in, well, creating the, the tree planting landscaping around this building, but also avenues like the entrance to Shannon Park where there's a successful planting of columnar oaks. So I guess we're curious, what is the best way to give you a hand? We have some, some resources that maybe could pass that. Unfortunately, I don't know, we have version one resources that have given to Lisa and Lorraine, but did not get them distributed to her.
No, that's okay.
Is there something that I can scan on?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. No, no, because they, they made some additions, so it's more, it's more updated. I actually have extras you can take. And I'm going to drive right by Lisa's house on the way home, so if you want, I can drop off.
Oh, that would be really nice.
Love it.
Lisa will appreciate that because I.
I will, I will. So is this, so it's not our, our big long one that I have already?
No, David made, David and Athena made updates, Lisa, to what we had.
Okay.
So the materials that we are passing out include a spreadsheet of appropriate trees for village tree planting in different situations. And it indicates what some And it indicates what some of the tolerances and intolerances might be. Wood trees are native, which are not native, separately listed invasive plants. And to go through the list in depth would probably take too long for this meeting. But I thought there was just, we also have a sample, uh, plant list. Because as members of the planning board, you often get a plan, a plant list, and sometimes really understanding what's on that plant list can be, can be difficult. And sometimes the planting itself may end up being, well, it could be disappointing or not what you were expecting. And so just understanding the sizes, forms of the, of trees that are specified, how they're specified, what might be appropriate, what might not be, would be, would be useful. I was just going to briefly go through these things, but please just ask questions. So first of all, balm and burlap trees. The standard commercial size for a balm and burlap tree is two inch. It means two inch caliper, which is measured six inches above the ground. And the American nursery standards will have then a set volume for the root ball that has to go with that for it to be, uh, a legal tree to sell in the trade. But, um, but and then there are certain things that evergreen trees are sold by height generally, not by caliper. So that would only be shade and flowering trees that are sold by caliper. And evergreen tree height generally is measured not to the tip of the tree, but to a little ways down, to halfway down on the leader. That's the, the final height. Shrubs and multi-stem trees, to be defined as a shrub or multi-stem tree, it must have at least three stems. A two-stem shrub or clump is not, does not meet specifications. Container grown trees, years, and, and plants. Years ago, you would hear the term gallon, so one gallon tree, a two gallon tree. And then the New York State Division of Weights and Measures got involved. And it turns out that many of the gallons were not true gallons. So they've come up with specified sizes for what is a number one container? What is a number two container and so forth? So one of the biggest revolutions in planting since I began, you know, almost 50 years ago, was planting trees high enough so that the root flare was at the level of ground or even a little bit above. There's an old saying in the nursery business, plant it high or watch it die. And trees generally will do better if planted a bit high than if submerged. So the worst if evaluating, when evaluating planting is to find that they've been planted too deeply and soil has been put on top of that, that root ball, whether it be from a container or balm and burlap. And the other big revolution is the whole idea of establishing how important it is to have an adequate, uh, soil volume for the tree to ultimately grow. And Dr. Nina Basak at Cornell has been revolutionary with the Urban Horticulture Institute and looked, seeing why did trees in New York and so many other cities die? And so often it was the tree would grow to the edge of the pit and then the roots would stop and circle around. And the tree would ultimately fail as it, as it got too big and its requirements for water became larger than the soil could, uh, support. So one standard that the village might consider is to have tree pits or beds that are either, in which soil is replaced or at least is scarified, loosened and amended. And the volumes are listed on the specifications here. And that can be a huge amount of soil. Athena, you did some research on this, is this from?
Yeah, this is from Nina's, uh, research. And she has, I, um, added the link to the research that she published for that. And there's a, um, calculation for certain planting sites to figure out how much soil you need for, like, these. It's a helpful resource, even though it was published in the nineties, but still, still rings true.
And so I think for, for our purposes, that's going to become most into play if we've got someone planting, say, in a parking lot or.
Yeah, that's what I was just like. I was thinking about our street trees even. I mean, like, yeah, there's.
Yeah, I mean, if we're, we're talking about a residential, different story, but that, like, anytime you're telling this parking lot, that's kind of like make or break.
It really is. And in, in some situations, like the Tompkins County Airport, we were the contractor who put in all those trees many years ago, and they had an excess of topsoil, so they backfilled with three feet of topsoil just to get rid of it. All the plantings have done incredibly well. Whereas parking lot trees often can, at a certain size, tend to, tend to falter. And that's often because the, their utilities, compacted soils, and just not enough volume for those trees to survive. Some trees, of course, will survive under very tough conditions. And Athena, what are some of those trees that you have listed?
Yeah, we've noted, we actually have in the stretch here on page. Page two, we have on compact street parking lot trees that are really tough and can grow well in smaller spaces. So that would be like the columnar, European hornbeam. There are other tough trees like cornelian cherries that can grow really well in tough sites. And then there are some larger street and parking lot trees if you have a slightly larger island and are looking for ultimately some shade, which I know that we mentioned, or when we were talking with Lisa and Lorraine, like, when you're parking in a parking lot, you go for that area that has the most shade. So having some of those trees in mind as well are also good for some larger sites.
And some of those balm are islands like Shannon Park. Another example is Northwood Drive. The trees used were a columnar hybrid oak that had been developed partly at Cornell, which is mostly a native tree that stays for about, whether it may be six to eight feet wide at the most. And at, at Northwoods, they are columnar hornbeams, which have, again, a similar size range, very tough and will endure a limited.
Yeah, we also listed plants that can also handle soil, which is a good consideration as well, especially for parking lots.
Most of the Village of Lansing is in a high lime area. Pacers came across central New York. They took the limestone of the northern Finger Lakes, grumped it up and spread it liberally over most of Lansing, were not high enough to get into the acidic soils. So almost all trees have to be tolerant of alkaline soils to do well in the village. So some trees like the regular pin oak or red maples that are native red maple that has a red fall color, uh, will tend to get chlorotic, which means they'll be yellowing between the veins of the leaves as they mature and are unable to, because of the high lime, get the nutrients they need. So choosing trees that are, will tolerate those alkaline soils is really critical in evaluating any plant list. Even a question to ask the presenter of a plan, are these trees tolerant of alkaline soils? And as contractors who do more planting at Cornell, I often see plant lists that come from particularly landscape architecture firms from New England. They're in an acidic zone, so their whole, the plant palette they're comfortable with using and that they think of the most includes lots of plants that like acidic soil. And then to plant, they typically die here. And over the years, there are many such examples on campus, you know, 3,000 low bush blueberries and ICA and so forth. So ask the question, are the trees, are the plants tolerant of high lime soils? Because most of the soils here, and most of the topsoil in our area is also relatively high lime. Sand is very high lime in this area. The nearest quarry that has acidic sand, you think of sand as being acidic, but the nearest quarry is about 100 miles away. Of course, it's not sustainable to be importing such acidic materials. Better to choose the plants that will survive in those conditions.
And we've noted on the attached document, uh, different trees and plants and shrubs that are undesirable within the landscape, like some that would not necessarily survive, like the ICA, I think it was, new cultivar that's recently come out that's better with IPH soils, but just certain things to keep an eye out for on plants.
Another issue that I don't think we have a village code, but maybe something to, and I may be wrong about this, but maybe something to look into in the future is scarification of the site so that in general, all the plants will, uh, will, will thrive. Meadows will thrive. So the standard at Cornell for some years has been to scarify in three inches of compost over the entire site, especially if the site's been compacted by heavy equipment. And if you have a heavily compacted site and you spread four inches of topsoil, it's still a very heavily compacted site. So there's strategies for de-compacting the soil so that you can get broad root growth and get trees that actually mature and thrive. It may be by using deep rippers, adding in compost. Usually a rototiller is not enough. It'll just sort of loosen the top few inches of soil.
And is that what scarifying, I've never heard that term.
That's what scarifying, scarifying, it means to scratch, in this case with soil. It means to deeply scratch, to deeply tear at the soil, to loosen it so that you get fractured soil for air and water to penetrate down to lower levels instead of just running out. So it also helps with that goal in the village of having water infiltrate into groundwater instead of running off quickly. There's a technique that Dr. Basak had come up with, which is called scoop and dump. So to dig out compacted soil and put in new soil is very expensive and sometimes is impractical over larger areas. So they, she had done research over years with a technique in which you leave the compacted, poor soil in place, spread a generous amount of compost or a different type of organic material, and then with an excavator, not people with rototillers, lift and simply drop it without anything, doing anything else that loosened the soil down to 18 inches and would allow for good root growth and plant growth. It is a good technique when budget is, is an issue.
And with rototillers, it often makes the compaction worse. It creates kind of a hard pan where water can't, water and roots.
There, there are other things. Again, when establishing trees in areas where there's a, uh, impavement, let's say, and, and, you know, the concrete, uh, you know, walkway or promenade along a mall. What is, the best practice now is to install what's called the, we call it CU soil. And it's essentially white powder that has been mixed up with fine clay particles and a hydrophilic polymer, basically a, a simple polymer that holds and attracts water. By mixing that up and using it under the concrete before pouring the concrete, then the trees that are planted in that, that area can, the roots will grow out through the base. Otherwise, if they're limited to the edge of the tree pit, it's an impervious barrier. And so that's been demonstrated in many places, like the, you know, the large trees, the, their London Plains that go up the whole plaza toward, uh, Urus Clock Tower is, is one example where that technique was used first around 1990. So just something again to consider in, in, in talking to those making presentations.
Okay. Wow.
It sounds like what we would want to do is, in, in addition to, you know, our, our tree law, have a, a planting guideline that can, that, that could be the appendix that.
That's what we're planning on.
Updated.
That's why David helped us with this, so.
Yeah.
Then I can put this appendix together.
Yeah, no, that's outstanding, right? It's not, it's not applicable to be put into local law, and neither is this per se. That would be terrible. But, um, right, as the appendices to say, hey, you know, here are the guidelines, whether it's, you know, in this case, planting guidelines, but same thing with design, construction, you know, standards and guidelines to follow. And those can, you know, those do regularly change over the time, whereas the intent of the law doesn't. Yeah, that's outstanding. Thank you.
I will say that for maybe some of the, when we do like a development with parking lots and whatnot, maybe we could require de-compaction or whatever. Or we should perhaps consider that for like in buffer strips and that kind of stuff. Maybe we should take a look at that.
But one way. Yeah, you're absolutely right. And I was gonna say, one way we can do that is by requiring a certain soil volume per tree. So if we say that you have to have X amount of soil volume, basically they, it forces them to do that.
Something, I think we should look at that and think about that because especially for street trees and, and commercial settings, I'm, I'm thinking obviously. It's great for, for letting people know, excuse me, in residential, because you want trees. And I think people would be more willing to do that, especially if it's new construction and they're moving the stuff around anyway. But I just want to say some thanks to Athena and David because you have been so generous with your time. And I'm just still impressed with all of the effort that you've put into this. And we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It's a fantastic resource.
It's a lot of work.
It's such a big help to have, like, a list of plants.
Yeah, that's outstanding. And I, you know, I love the special notes that go along with them, like deer, deer. So that's outstanding.
Because even having recently moved from the Hudson Valley, the plants are very different here. And so you kind of have to learn how to work with your local climate.
And I, I moved here from New England and I can attest to, a lot of the stuff I grew there didn't here. Wasted a lot of money over the years.
So I just have questions. And looking at our tree lot, I don't know if you had a chance to look through it, but the, the board has kind of struggled historically with density of plantings on a lot and what is reasonable? And also kind of how much to, I'll say, micromanage the variety and the sizes and the types that go onto a lot? I don't know if you had any thoughts about how we've currently kind of maybe scaled it back a bit from what is on the books with our new proposed changes? We haven't really gone as into the understory, overstory, deciduous, evergreen, et cetera. Do you have any?
Again, look at the tree law and the question at the outset and the purpose. You mentioned that one of the purposes is to maintain appropriate tree diversity to build forest resilience. So at least a basic rule might be, don't, uh, reduce the diversity of species if, let's say, a lot has to be cleared to build a house, you know? Replant or a building, a commercial building, replant at least that many more, that, that number, reestablish that number of species. There are some peculiarities in the tree law I noticed that, um, one, um, you know, if trees are removed, one of the remedies is to, um, contribute to the, the tree bank. Well, I'd say one of the general conditions for the tree planting plan. If, um, yeah, that is part, let's see, it's number, number three, the general conditions for tree planting plan. So all new trees must have a caliper size no less than two inch. This is measured by a caliper and, uh, okay, the tree unit value of existing trees will be measured by DBH, which is diameter breast height. But then four shrubs of a minimum, this is part D, of a minimum two gallon size may be counted as one tree unit, which is an odd mix. It's just a little bit like saying four onions shall be equal to one sheep if you're in a market. And it reminds me of those, you know, nursery tales of farmers who came back with nothing after trading down over and over. So it's, it's just an odd, in other words, one easy out would be to just buy a whole bunch of two gallon shrubs and not replace the trees.
Yeah, I struggle with that one too.
Yeah, we've struggled in not wanting to overly dictate what a homeowner can, I'm thinking residential, really, like what a homeowner can put on their small property if they really like shrubs. If they just want box fruits everywhere, that's your house. I, I mean, I think you should be able to do that. But I mean, so I think that's where we kind of struggle in how much do you want to control, how much control the board wants to have.
And, and when this was originally being developed, there was quite a bit of discussion about number of shrubs and what they.
And now apparently two gallon is not even the right.
There you go, right, it's not.
Not a reference. It should be a number now.
Possibly could be higher. Possibly could be higher or, you know, there are other ways of handling, I suppose, that, well, the issue came up also, I had a conversation with the developer from Georgia who was thinking of buying the giant lot that goes from, up from the swim club down to the park. And there's thousands, uncounted thousands of ash trees and other trees that are crowded and not in good shape. And he's looking at the tree law and we're reading it together and how do you possibly develop something like that while complying with the law? You have to put in roads, you have to put in driveways, and the whole thing is covered with trees at, you know, whatever, 100 trees per thousand square feet or something. I mean, they were, it's like dense thickets. And many of them, those what look like small trees are four inch caliper and therefore certainly count as a substantial tree according to this law. So it's almost like you need to somehow separate the standards for different situations. It's one thing if you're cutting all the trees in your backyard down, leaving a problem for your neighbors, but when there's a situation like that, maybe you have to look at it from a forestry standpoint instead of an individual tree standpoint. But just a future thought if the law is ever undergoes change.
Well, we're doing it right now. I mean, that's, we have, you know, these redlined versions of the actual law because kept butting up against things like that, like wait a second, you know, there are times where the things in the law make really good sense if you're a homeowner, but if you're a commercial developer, it's the other way, or the other way around. Where, so we're trying to figure out how to craft this law so it applies broadly and reasonably to all the development that happens here, whether it's commercial or residential.
So now is the perfect, right, now is the perfect time, right? That's like, like Ymina said, we're preparing a packet to pour it onto the trustees for them to consider. And when the, not this one, because this isn't the original, this is the markup one. When the original, you know, it's been years since the original tree law was implemented, we've gotten the chance to put it into practice now a few times and hear from, you know, and have people who are interested in, right, buying a piece of property and what that would mean with them with the current tree law in effect. Or we've applied it to residential, we've applied it to residential property and, you know, what have we run up against? So, and all those things do, you know, and obviously, you know, comments like that help us figure out what we should change to make it work better for the village and for the residential.
Maybe separating residential and commercial for one thing, they are so different.
Yeah, we've talked about that too.
Another idea is to separate lots from buildings that already, let's say, residential, a residential lot that has the house on it already. Someone has already cut all the trees down in that lot. Whereas if you're starting with a lot, it's a different situation. There's a certain amount of clearing you have to do just to put in the driveway in the house. And maybe there should be some leniency towards developing a residential lot compared to cutting all the trees down in your backyard in an established neighborhood.
Right, and we had talked about, you know, how the square footage of buildings factors into, right, what you're, what you're doing on a piece of property.
The clear cutting on Dart that led to this law being discussed, I don't really understand the circumstances of that. They had subdivided out a vacant parcel and then clear cut the lot?
They clear cut the lot first.
Okay.
Yeah. They clear cut first.
Yep.
Interesting to segment unimproved lots versus improved lots.
Another idea would be that, just to put the, let's see, going back to the general conditions, new trees, it shall have a caliper size of no less than two inch. So that is immediately making it an expensive proposition to replace a tree you take down for an average homeowner, not one of us, maybe for do it yourselfers, people in that income. A two inch caliper tree is going to already weigh 400 pounds and be awkward, it's going to be a 12 foot tree. So it's, it's, it rules out, it means you have to hire someone. And that means that tree replacement is going to cost $600, let's say. So I would say reducing that size, but still make it big enough that it's not going to be run over or be insignificant, either to inch and a half caliper, which is a smaller size, or inch and a half, or maybe eight to 10 foot container ground. That way it would be, I think, fairer for those people who, whatever, they want to put in a shed, they've got to cut down a few trees, but they don't want to spend an extra several thousand, they want to meet the conditions of the new law by planting, and it would make it more achievable and I think be fairer.
I agree. Yeah, I'd say that's a really good point. And one thing that we've found is, and I'm sure you all know as well, especially as you move towards that side of the village, the soils are really shallow.
Right.
And you've got like sometimes a couple of inches, sometimes you might eke out 12. And to dig a hole for a B and B is really hard. And frankly, establishing a larger tree is a little bit harder. Whereas if you get a smaller tree, your hole is smaller, but it also gets a chance to kind of grow it and the roots will actually break up all that sail. So, so that's actually a really good point, if maybe we separate out residential from commercial. Because the commercial folks, I mean, they're not going to grab a shovel and go to your nursery and buy a tree and be doing it themselves. But for a homeowner, that certainly would incentivize them to do it more, to know they can do it a little bit on the inexpensive side.
And it's much easier to transport. We've fit a lot of potted trees in like creases and small cars, but when it comes to a B and B, you typically would need to rent a trailer or have us deliver it and that's much more expensive and a lot more logistically challenging.
Yeah. Well, I think we have some work to do.
Yeah.
A lot to do. A question of establishment, having just listened in on the previous discussion about the live stake planting for the Bolton Point new pump station, the thing about live stakes is the time, the season in which you install them. And they, if, they're kept in cold storage, you know, you usually get them from some regional native plant suppliers, and we've done a fair amount of this. But if you, if the job is going to be completed in the fall, there's no point putting in live stakes. They have to be put in in the spring. They're dormant, they're kept dormant, normally they're red ocher dogwood would leaf out in late April. But if they're kept in cold storage, they can be, that can be extended to the end of June. But you're not going to get them established, they're going to have very high mortality if you're going to put in a live stake in late August. So in evaluating a plan that includes live stakes, like the one that's presented, that should almost be a condition, is to ask about the schedule.
And so that's one of the things that we captured in here was if things need to be done in phases or at, we had chatted about that too, saying depending on the time of year that something is starting or being completed, is it appropriate to put plants in? Because there's no out on that now. It's like, well, I think there is, but we did specifically talk about that to give things the best chance to survive. Not just, well, sorry, we gave you a special permit, we know it's the middle of February, but hey, put that tree in the ground. No. Or maybe yes, depends on what it is. Maybe it's a, you know, loves that kind of weather. But yeah, so we've talked about that.
Yeah, the general rule is the bigger the tree, the longer through the winter you can plant it. You know, one winter we planted about three trees on Brown Road in Thornwood in February in bitter cold like we had last week, and they did beautifully because they were large trees with big deep root balls. You plant them, put mulch over them, they're fine. But a small dogwood planted the same day probably would have died.
What, so the board has talked about adding the ability to like multi-stem? Because I don't know right now if our code really allows for that. What would be like a reasonable height, do you think, for a residential owner versus a commercial owner if we want multi-stems to be?
Yeah, that's a good question. So what is the equivalent of, let's say, a two inch tree in multi-stem? Multi-stem, the equivalent is about eight to 10 feet. That would have a root ball of the same size, 32 inches across, about three, 32 inches deep. It's a big, heavy plant, it costs about the same, like $600 a piece installed, let's say. So for the, that would be, eight to 10 is equal to two inch caliper. And I would say that, let's say, what is equal to an eight to 10 foot single stem tree in a pot? It's probably a five to six foot clump. And there are plenty of plants that would, I think adding clumps to the tree law is a great idea, because there are a lot of species that are very appropriate in the village and thrive. Trees like the native river birch, do very well around here, or service flowering trees like service berry. There are many trees that are, you know, clump, red buds, there are all kinds of things that could be used.
That's actually good, because one of the things we struggled with, with talking about shrubs is because, you know, some of the clump things ended up being classified as shrubs. You know, and there are some very large shrubs that have a huge benefit, you know, whether it's stormwater retention or native habitat or whatever. How do we, you know, how do we account for those in this tree law as like one of the equivalencies? Because, you know, as we all know, like if you put in like a little two gallon azalea, it's everyone going to get this big, especially here, you know, and people keep doing that. And that's never going to have the same value as say like, you know, an oak that you've put in. But, but you might get an equivalent value if you put in, say, like a bunch of service berries. You know, so, so we're trying to understand, on some level, we have to kind of put on our, our, let's find every loophole hat, you know? So if I'm, if I'm a person who's looking at this law and I want to get away with the absolute minimum possible, I could theoretically put a whole bunch of boxwoods in that it will only ever get, you know, so big after 20 years. And I will have met the letter of the law, but the intent is to have diversity, the intent is to have shade, the intent is to create habitat and, you know, to do some climate mitigation, both in terms of like heat island effect and also stormwater. So figuring out that equivalency is the part where we're really needing some guidance.
Maybe that part D then could be something like, I see, that's what you're saying, yeah. To try to get that as the result, to more native shrubs that grow to be almost like trees, maybe that could say five shrubs, multi-shrubs, multi-stem trees or single-stem trees in a two or three, let's say a number three container size. You can't use the word gallon, of course, because that's illegal in VR state. So that would be equivalent to what you're calling the tree unit.
Right.
I mean, even four at a number three size, but it could be a tree in a pot just as well as a shrub, so it doesn't have to be a shrub, so.
Well, as usual, it's more complicated than you think.
Yeah.
Like so many other challenges this board has encountered, I'm sure, reviewing these thorny issues.
It's just a whole new world, that's all. Okay.
On a separate sheet, we have just a typical plant schedule. And this one is the exact plant schedule is for a project at Cornell we appointed last year at Bolsholz. But just as an example, it's always good to be able to see the form of the tree so that you understand, is it multi-stem, which means clump, are the roots, B and B, of course, means bald and burlapped. For things, you have the spacing, of course, OC is the, it just means on center, which you already are totally familiar with. Sometimes, now this was a good professional plant list, but often when evaluating plans and bidding on them, we find that things are mismatched, you know, the Latin name and the common name are not the same, or the plants may not be hardy, or you'll have plants that are specified in an inappropriate size. You know, I've had jobs where you had to find plants to bid on a job that, you know, there is one in the Arnold Arboreum of that size after 50 years, but you know, certainly you're not going to find them in the trade. So I don't think there's too much to look at here, but.
You know, there, there's, that raises one question about, you know, specifying sizes. We've, we've talked a little bit about how sometimes people will show on a plan, you know, a tree at its full growth in it, in that Arnold Arboreum thing. So you're seeing a circle on the plan that's really large, but really in reality, it's going to be 40 years before it's that size. And it may never even get that size because of the conditions, because we've got those shallow soils here. So we have here in our draft, maybe show canopy coverage at 60% of what a final size is, or maybe after 10 years of growth. Would that be an appropriate guideline? Or is there some other guideline that we should give folks so that we don't end up with that deceptive drawing?
That's a really good question, and there isn't one standard in the, in the, you know, in the design field for how to represent trees accurately. One of the graphic problems you develop is that on a tight site, if you're showing a lot of trees, if you're showing all of them as very large, they're full size, they may be overlapping so many other things that then it's hard to read, just to read and understand what's going on, like where does this plant end and the other ones? So generally, I'd say probably better to ask that they're shown a bit smaller, I don't know, maybe 50% they're the full size, but, because it could be hard to pick out the different trees on the plan otherwise. It just gets it looking very crowded.
Yeah.
But overall, your idea of 60% is good, you could pick out exactly where it is, but I wouldn't show them full size.
Well, that's the thing, we're trying to, we're trying to ask people not to show them full size because it's a little deceptive.
We're not going to leave that here.
Yeah.
Unless it's a box.
And then, I don't know, is there anything else that either stood out to you in looking at the tree law or anything else that those of us who are reading this tree law and trying to write it feel like we need more, more guidance on?
Yes, you know, the issue of density is an issue, in other words, you do often find these days, there are a lot of dying ash on sites, you know, the dying ash count toward the existing density when you're, or there's a provision, of course, that a dying of any tree may be removed without the special permit, I believe.
Oh, well, counting should be-
Yeah, counting, what do you count? Because four inch caliper with existing trees is not, your four inch DBH is not really that, you know, like you could have hundreds of trees on some sites that size. You know, I'd even consider raising it so that people could cut small trees down without needing a permit, but that's obviously up to the board.
The other thing too is, like if you're looking at a wooded lot, you're going to have, it's going to, it's going to cost you so much to get somebody in to discount all of those. So I think that idea of separating out undeveloped wooded lands.
Residential.
Yeah, I had similar conversations with the developer, it sounds like you, David, spoke with, and I, you can only, yeah, it was a barrier for them.
Right. So maybe, maybe we look at that 25% applying to already developed properties and wooded lots having a different goal, where it's not 25%. Maybe there's a, there's an end goal where at the end it needs to be like this. And maybe, you know, maybe we raise the DBH so that only the special trees are, are really saved as opposed to every single four inch.
Yeah, I mean, it also just would, in terms of just managing the regulation, if you raise it to six inches, it may be there's situations where it doesn't, you know, it's not creating extra work for the village staff. So you're really catching the most valuable trees, the trees that are already big enough and healthy enough to be, clearly part of the canopy that you want to preserve. Not that young trees couldn't grow to create that, but-
Of each, it would be a lot of counting.
Right.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Let's see. Well, I didn't go through this and underline every line, just to, those are just a few quick comparisons.
No, that's, that's, that's great.
The table of equivalencies is going to be the biggest thing to track. What will, you know, how many, four to five could be on number three containers? And then what that looks like for residential versus commercial and multi-stem? What equals a tree is what will be the biggest, one of the biggest things.
If you, yeah, right. Let's see, one tree unit was just defined earlier. As a reminder, does anyone know exactly what one tree unit was?
Can you pull up the table, Mike, that's in the current code? Because certain sized trees count for more tree-ness than others.
Right.
And it's not in this draft that we're looking at.
Yep, hold on a second.
We can see if that makes sense.
Is she looking for?
Yeah, can you make it, make it nice and big though?
Yeah, I don't think I have that page.
Yeah, that's not in, that's not in this draft here.
That's just a typical, yeah.
How much the tree is worth in tree units?
Figure it out.
Yep.
So it's like four to six inch caliber tree is one tree unit. So everything is based on four inch caliber essentially. Six to 12 inches, 1.5. So one option to simplify things would be to just raise that standard a little bit, you know, to maybe have one tree unit be a six inch caliber tree and then nine to 12 inch be one and a half, the tree units, et cetera. But then in a way, you can see this, this entire value chart is skewed toward overvaluing small trees and undervaluing big trees. A stately oak of 18, an 18 inch DBH oak is like a signature tree on that property. And that's worth right now, three times some little four inch trees. So it's, somehow it'd be better to skew it toward, so that the bigger trees are the more important thing, not every little sapling. And it may be by raising the points for some, was it 24 inch tree is a big tree. It's a big tree, you see a big tree like this, but no, it's not 24 inch. It only measures 19 inches. I use a tree tape in my forest to check how they're growing from time to time. And you don't find very many 24 inch trees. So that's right now not worth very much according to, in the village's eyes.
Right, whereas that would be a tree that's been there since, you know, I don't know, it's, it's an 80-year-old tree.
Absolutely, yeah. Like a perfect example is, okay, I get that park names mixed up. Is at the end of, on the way to the swim club, is that Tankard Park there that you passed? Yeah, okay, at Tankard Park, there was a driver who drove, drove off, who was inebriated, drove off the road and hit that incredibly beautiful pin oak that's there sort of as you're going. Oh no, this is an uptown road, you know, and you make the turn to go up to the swim club. And it made a huge gash in the tree. Now, what is the value of that tree? That tree is almost invaluable. It's so, so big, so beautiful. And yet it didn't reach 24 inch in diameter.
Yes.
So anyway, just something to think about, yeah.
Other questions or comments from anybody? I know we're trying to push them, pushing that, but.
No, I think.
Definitely given us plenty to think about, some stuff we had discussed and some stuff we haven't.
So thank you.
Yeah.
And there's definitely some people here that know a lot more about, you know, planting some trees and everything, me not being one of them, so.
I learned from it too, so hey, there you go.
Bonus. But yeah, we appreciate you coming in and.
Very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, this is very too, obviously.
No, I mean, I think this is.
Yeah, it's outstanding with the notes, yeah.
This is like, this is like a bible, right?
Yeah.
This is like, I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh yeah, I can look it up when she says stuff. I'm like, I know what that is. That's a red maple.
Isn't that nice to have all this information all in one?
We do, we do still have the planting program too in the village for residents to be able to plant and get reimbursed, so we do still.
Wow, a generous program.
Still here.
Mike, is it possible to print out a couple of the equivalency charts to give to them to take with them?
Thank you, Mike.
The one we just hooked in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Another interesting thing on the list is there now are, let's just say that the planting along Trippamah Road of calorie pears is so beautiful on the spread. It's a shame that it's an invasive, a non-native invasive species. And if you want to see how is it invasive? All you have to do is drive over the Trippamah Road Bridge over Route 13 and there's a thorny tangle. And initially, the original one, Bradford Pear, was thought to be the perfect tree. Fruitless, non-invasive, et cetera. It was, and it was so until people started introducing other calorie pears, the parent tree. Then they would cross pollinate and then you had the missing fruit. And then the birds would have dropped the fruit. And the fruit, when they germinate, they turn into thorny, like Hawthorns. And that's what you see driving over that bridge. So in our list, we do have a calorie pear named Chastity, which is fruitless. So there are some, in the world of, of tree development and breeding, there are some, some nice developments that allow you to have those beautiful flowers.
Thornless Hawthorns.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Amazing, thanks.
Much for somebody.
You're welcome.
Before we move on to the press day report, you have anything else you wanted to bring up today?
Yeah.
Let's start the business.
Do you know something? I know something, though. Well, actually, no, I do have a question. As far as Park Grove is concerned, have we had any updates from them? And who, who's, who's the liaison for the village with Park Grove?
We have any updates from Park Grove?
Doing test polls at this point, so.
Yeah, so they gave the presentation to the board of trustees and as far as I know, I don't know that there's been other correspondence with the village after they gave that presentation and took the temperature.
No, they don't. I went through, and I think I discussed this with you, Natalie. When we found out they had to come in for the line change, I said everything was going to get out of order. They'd probably be, put them on a month behind. We tried to do this in one meeting. We will try to, once this is done, we have to make the zoning change, but we have to have, we have to know exactly what that parcel is, configuration of the parcel. I don't know whether you know how to use the bounds or not, but.
No, no.
Once that's, once.
Once it's through assessment.
Yeah, once it's through assessment, I can get it, which I might be able to get this week. Get it to Natalie. She'll have a draft of the zoning change. That'll go to the planning board or the board of trustees their next meeting, which they'll read through and set a public hearing. In the meantime, I will set up sending GML 239 out to the county.
For the zone change.
Yep, that type of action is, is going to be type one action. This is over 20 acres, so they'll have to do a full EAF. So I mean, you're probably looking at another couple of months before they're able to come here to the.
The zone change or the East Point actual development being a part one? Because I thought the zone change wasn't unlisted.
The zone change, if it's over 20 acres, it's under the type one.
Okay.
And that's.
So both.
20 acres.
Okay.
Yeah, just like we had to do uptown. We changed that over. That was like 25 acres. We had to go through a, a full sweep.
I will amend my resolution.
Have one ready already, though, that's good.
I had some time. No, no longer.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Lorraine?
No, but I did have one question and I noticed this months ago, but then we didn't have meetings because of the holidays and stuff. But the pavilion that Gaslight Village put in, that looks so ridiculous there. Are they going to put gas grills out there? Oh God, okay.
Asked about, I could say they asked about how far to put a gas grill under a canopy type of stuff. So I assumed it would be.
Oh God. Anyway, it looks ridiculous where they, I mean, obviously they don't have a lot of property over there, but considering that they had that fire already, the last thing they want, close.
Well, I think I'd rather have it there than people put it on their own porches illegally.
I haven't seen that.
Actually, that company, some people that own Lansing West, one of the things that's in the lease agreement is you can't do any grilling or other fire activity on your balcony. And I, I think there's a 25, like 20 or 25 feet within the building, but you can't do it on it. You're not supposed to do it on the balcony.
Well, it's the same at Park Grove, I mean, Park Grove, it's the same at East Point. You have to be, you can have a grill. It has to be a gas grill, no charcoal, and it has to be 15 feet away from the building. So basically you could go to the end of your driveway. But there are still people that don't obey that and they have their gas grill on their patio or underneath their porch area. But for the most part, most people do. And plus they also provided a gas grill up on the patio area.
I have written up every, I'll tell you in a building I've gone to, I've written up gas grills on the porches.
I mean, I could give you the apartment numbers. I could give you the apartment numbers, Mike.
I've seen them up against the final siding. Take a look at that.
Yeah, pull, pull in and look at building one and you'll see it right there, yeah. But yeah, anyway, I wanted to ask that months ago and I never had the opportunity because when I first, I saw them building it, like, and I'm like, don't tell me they're putting a pavilion there. And then the next time I drive by, it was up and I thought, that is just so ridiculous. I'm sure it'll be a problem eventually.
Anything else? Jim, anything?
Well, we got the trust day report at some point.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll do that after this one.
Okay, otherwise I don't have anything.
Okay, I know, I don't know if Lisa had anything. She had to step away, so. With that though, Jim, you want to give the trustee report?
Sure. Well, most recent trustees meeting would have been January 20th, but it was a federal holiday, so there was no meeting. The other one was done on, but it sounds like everybody's been up to speed, was in January 6th. And I, I know Lisa and Lorraine attended this one remotely. The Park Grove really, you know, came in with sort of, as has been said, taking the temperature of the board of trustees' proposal to rezone the property adjacent to East Point across from it on, on the north side of Beaumont. Same company that developed East Point, they wanted to fill, I think, 15 units of 25 acres. And they were approached by Board Warner to buy the property. It'd be similar buildings to East Point, 10 units per building. They talked about, they'd be using the same builder and same architect and, you know, they could move forward quickly. Trustees, a kind of informal poll thought it sounded okay. It suggested that they make that presentation to the planning board. So preview of coming attractions.
Yeah.
And let's see, the other item, a hard time following, but basically it was a citizen, John Dennis, proposing that regarding the Cargill salt mine, I guess they're going to, proposing to flood part of the mine and concern about drinking water getting salty or it's higher than the EPA recommendation for sodium. And they're asking, they asked the village to do a resolution asking state DEC to deny the permit. And there was discussion about it, but essentially the bottom line was the mayor and others determined it was beyond the purview of this, the village. And they tabled it, which you made clear that doesn't mean it's dead, but it's tabled. And yeah, they were asking for a local resolution, just asked DEC to slow down, but nothing. As I said, the mayor tabled it, nothing came of it. And then the only other thing was the, they went into executive session about something or other at 9:20 PM. That's what, that's what I had for the January 6th trustees meeting.
Okay.
If Natalie or Susan think I left something out, feel free to elaborate.
Matches my recollection, Jim.
Okay, I know Lisa's not here, but Lisa has the, the February trustee meetings and then I've got March, so there you go.
All right, I'll, I'll let Lisa know because.
Yeah.
I just want to add on after Jim said that about Cargill. I had to look up, Ithaca Voice just put an art, had an article that they posted today and I don't know if it's the same thing. Tompkins County Legislature urged state officials for further environmental review of the Cargill salt mine under Cubal Lake, joining eight other local municipalities, which recently passed similar resolutions. That, that was just the heading. So I don't, it's the same thing, okay. Anyway, if anybody wants to read that, Ithaca Voice posted it today.
Yeah, I, I think, Lorraine, I think it is exactly the same thing. Because I, I'm trying to remember if the proponent mentioned, mentioned the county or they mentioned the town, but it's, it sounds like the same thing. The article that you referenced mentioned the name of the proponent or the presenter.
I didn't, I didn't open it up. I just went, because I remember I saw it. When you started to talk about that, I'm like, oh, I just saw something. And I just quickly went and looked at the Ithaca Voice page. I didn't click on the article. I just read the heading.
Well, I'm sure it's the same thing. It sounds.
Yeah, it probably is.
Sounds like, it sounds like the same, same request that the proponent was making to have a resolution to ask the state DEC to take it out of.
Yeah.
Anything for me, Natalie?
No.
Anything you want to share? Any updates on that?
I misspoke. The East Point project requires a full SWIP. I think I said SWIP to you. But the zoning change requires a full EAF for the ZEEC for a type one action.
Maybe your resolution should just find a way to.
You, next meeting, you will more than likely have the 20 Beaumont PDA back here in front of us. That project has increased to 500 units. They have been made aware that the village right now only has 347 available sewer units. I've made them aware of that. They go back in front of you. They have their, I'll be sending to you, I had a packet here. I'll be sending it to you. It also has the traffic study for Warren Road and Beaumont.
Okay, so that's what they were doing last week then? That I thought maybe it was Park Grove property, but because their things were on our stop sign at East Point Drive.
Yeah, East Point, that costs too much. I don't think they'll do it unless you're required.
Yeah.
Mike, were you saying that this was the, the Park Grove proposal, 150? Because I know what the trustees mean. They said 130 units.
Yeah, 130.
Company.
130 is Park Grove, that's what you're suggesting.
Because it was 10 units less though in East Point, because we're 140.
And 500 for 20 Beaumont.
Yeah, that's, that's a little steep, sorry.
Todd Metcalf from General Code is also going to be at the next meeting.
Todd Metcalf from General Code is also going to be at the next meeting, unless we have to push that for a reason, but just to give us a brief presentation about that, so.
Well, speaking of that, I do have Jody's draft minutes here in front of me, and I had gone through and just went through and highlighted a few follow-up items. I know we're all tired and ready to go, but just as a reminder, Mike, you had said, let's see, Baker stated that the next meeting, the planning board can run through the list of changes needed and have French create a proposal law, local law to fix them. And then you had said you would send out the General Code presentation that Carolyn sent to everybody on December 13th.
Oh, I was going to send that back out? I'm sorry.
Yeah, but that's all right. I mean, I can do it, if you want me to do it, I can send it to everybody tomorrow, because I can, I've got it in my email.
I've got it right here, I'll send it out.
It said Baker volunteered to forward it again.
Open in front of me.
And I will chime in that I did promise you that I would take a look at the comparison of special permits over the last year with the tree law as opposed to...
Thank you.
It's okay.
Thank you, Mike. I don't, now I have, I have to remind you of that.
Yeah.
See what else?
And I guess there's kind of a question about that, too. Right at one point, we thought, oh, you know, we're kind of close, we just need this thing. But now it sounds like, no, we're not. So I am just curious, and this, you know, this is, I'm, I'm not, you know, went to either way of this, I'm curious if there are some incremental changes that we just want to say, hey, we know these things are going to happen, go, or do we want to really wait until we have everything hammered out? Who knows how long that'll be if we're going to, I'm joking here when I say break it up into tier one, two, and three, but no, but like, you know, unimproved versus, you know, improved residential versus commercial in those things, it is likely that will take longer. I'm just curious if there are things that we could pass along to the trustees that would help, you know, with, you know, because we're getting into that season where we're going to be getting things that where the tree law is going to apply that could...
Especially these large developments, right? You want, we want to have it in place before, like...
Yeah.
All those trees are going to be...
And that's my point. So I'm just curious if there are some things that we know are good, are not good enough, but are good to go, and then we can save a, kind of a bigger rework of it for, you know, another update. Just, I'm not looking for an answer, just kind of think about it.
So Lisa and I can get together and talk about David's presentation, and, you know, I made notes, I'm sure she did, too. We can make some adjustments and then maybe bring it back to the planning board, and we can go through it again like we did back in Thanksgiving time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's going to, I mean, I think that's a good idea. I mean, I think there's things that we saw were clearly, maybe we want to change the area calculation in the next building season. Like, we are pretty set on that calculation, so I think once we can double-check that what we want for volume and area calculation, that might be something that we can change offhand to not burden, overly burden applicants that come in.
Right, yeah.
And then a further delineation between commercial and residential will take some more time, depending on how far down the rabbit hole we want to go.
It sounds like it's even more important to do a delineation between unimproved and improved.
Yeah.
Because with, with the commercial, yeah, with commercial, really, it, it could be as simple as, instead of delineating residential and commercial, we could talk about plantings that are in, in impervious areas, because that would really only apply to commercial. You know, if you're a homeowner, you're not going to have that much of impervious area. And then we don't have to worry about differentiating those, but it sounds like the unimproved piece is, is actually a huge detriment.
Yeah. It was a big barrier for the uptown road parcel. And it isn't other things, it wasn't the only thing that were coming. They had other issues with our code and the way we do things, but I know it was a big concern for them.
Yeah.
Send it.
But what about these tree species? How, I mean, how are we going to, like, whittle this down?
I don't even know if we need to whittle it down.
We do, I mean, if these are things appropriate here for various categories.
Yeah.
We can just have this as a resource.
And that's the thing, right? It's not, it's not like a, hey, you have to and can only plant things off here, no.
Right.
But, I mean, these are the things that are going to do well here, and we can, as we review planting plans, we can reference this.
Yeah.
You know, somebody might really like a, some non-invasive thing that's not on the list here.
But it's really, it's really nice with all these different definitions.
Yeah, I, I really like that. It's not just like a list of, yeah, here's the trees that are good, and here's their Latin name, and right, no, it's like the notes.
But now you know, like, you'll see, oh.
And the ones that are good for salt.
The ones that are like, large streets, small, so I think, yeah, that's outstanding.
Deer is a big thing, because people spend all this money to plant their shrubbery and their trees, and then the deer's just...
Well, we talk about that all the time. Well, and, you know, the, the point that David made about, you know, yeah, you know, somebody goes out and hires this firm, and they're from New England, and they're like, oh, yeah, these things are good New York, yeah, well, not here they're not.
And that's happened, I mean, I think, probably between you and Lisa, who knows?
That's been called out at least a couple of times at the end of last year with various things, so, yeah.
Yeah. No, I, I think the idea, like, maybe, maybe the guidance is, you know, we are going to attach this appendix that has all these resources, and we ask developers, you know, we let them know that if you use these resources and follow these guidelines, we'll be able to sail through approvals of a planting plan.
This will go a lot faster.
But if you, and if you want to do something different than that, that's okay, but it just means that we'll have to go through, looking at the planting plans a little more in detail.
Yeah.
And, and quite frankly, every developer's going to want to make it as easy as possible. It's a huge favor to them that we're going to give them a list and say, choose from these.
Okay.
It's a good list.
It really is, yeah, no, I...
Oh, yeah. And, I mean, I'm sure it took Athena a long time, I mean, she had just finished this, Lisa and I met with them, like, before Christmas. And so she put a lot, and when we saw it, we were like, oh, my God.
Yeah, I know, I want to...
I know.
So it takes forever to set these lists up, yeah, you know.
Did you have other things, or are you...
Um, no, I think, I think, hold on, let me just look, there was one other thing. Oh, did we already, did you already mention that, the chart of uses?
I'm working through it, yeah.
And then, of course, we had the order.
Yes.
Order for tackling these issues. I don't know if you want me to repeat them, so we have it in our...
If you want to, you can, obviously, there's...
The MC.
Press and finish.
You got it?
We're not going to be able to tackle that right now.
But, I mean, yeah, the next, next three cycles, we have to tackle stuff, yeah, that's... Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:19 PM.
Motion by Lorraine.
By Pat, all in favor?
See you later, Jim, thanks a lot.
Lorraine and Pat, or Pat and Lorraine?
It was Lorraine.
Lorraine, Lorraine, I took a turn, poor Pat, I always like, look at him and me.